Okay, it is now six o'clock and I think we'll get started here. Can everyone hear me okay? Thumbs up? Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Alright, so the agenda for this evening, I wanted just to get through some quick introductions here. Kind of go through kind of the order of the public meeting in logistics here. What we wanted to do is provide the presentation and reserve discussions and questions at the very, for the very end. We'll make sure that we give plenty enough time for the discussion and questions. If questions do come up during the meeting, feel free to put them in the chat box. I will read through them. And I will read them to the rest of the group during the discussion and questions portion of this meeting. Also, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Village website. The chat transcript will be available upon request. In case anyone does have any questions, all the information presented this evening will be available to you and to the public. So with that being said, what I'd like to do is give a brief update. The Village Board, well, first introductions. So if none of you, any of you don't know, my name is Bill Chang. I'm the Village Administrator. We have also Village President Jay Langfeld here with us this evening and trustees, Bill Brosius and Laurie Xander. We also have staff, Jerry Gray and Mike Axon, and then we have Ben Heiderman as the Village Engineer. I do see two phone numbers, so if and I don't know who they are, so if I missed you, I apologize about that. So we've come to a point, I think, in this process where we do really need to make a decision on the placement and eventually layout of of the well number three. And when I say we, I mean as in the village, so that we can move forward in this process. At the January 11 meeting, Town and Country presented a few options to the site location. She made the location on the site, which is Whole Felder Park, and also the layout for that. Instruction that we received from the Village Board was to also add in an option for up by the road right away, front facing, and to see what the impact of that potentially would be to the playground and the park. And so I'll let Ben walk us through the layout and the placement and go from there. Any comments from the Village Board or staff before we get into the presentation? Okay, Ben, the mic's yours.
Need to make sure to turn on my mic and I am, Bill, I'm gonna request to share screens.
Yep, you should be able to share your screen at this point.
There is available. Alright, just as a refresher, I am Ben Heideman. I'm with Town and Country Engineering and act as the Village Engineer for Water and Wastewater Services. A lot of you may have heard some of this presentation before, but this is really intended to follow up on a public meeting that we held in Whole Felder Park back in the late summer, early fall. And to provide an update to the residents on where the well is at. We talked about late last year, some of the history, but again, this well number three has been planned for Whole Felder Park for quite some time, dating back to the 90s, prior to this plat being developed. And then as this site was developed and this park eventually built, the villages had an intention of putting a well there and kind of built the park in a fashion so as to allow it. And they're just now reaching the point where they've decided to pull the trigger on that well. Just as a general update for how things have progressed since that late summer meeting, there has been a test well that's been drilled. That test well has been, was intended to investigate two different options and how the well may be constructed to evaluate the best options for water quality, water supply, and flexibility for the village long term. What was the result of that is the well itself is anticipated to be drilled to 300 feet. It does have very good water quality and should be of a very similar water quality to that that the village already experiences from their two existing wells. So that whole test well experience was very positive and also provided the village a lot of information as to what the future may hold and should they ever have to make adjustments far down the line. Beyond that, then, we've been having conversations with the Village Board relative to some conceptual layouts for where this proposed well number three may be located. We are going to walk through three different layouts tonight that attempt to address comments that were received last fall, as well as discussion that the board has had subsequent to that. You will notice that the wellhouse may look a little different than what we were talking last fall. The Village Board did decide to eliminate any garage space that may be located on there. They also decided not to incorporate any bathrooms or pavilion space into this wellhouse. So we're primarily going to be looking at four concepts of location for the well and size of the building. This first concept here is, I guess, the, I'll put it as ideal concept from a access and long-term operation standpoint. It provides a larger building located in the back of the property. It was still not a crazy large building. Total dimensions are roughly 22 feet by 31 feet. There would be a generator located behind the building with a retaining wall to kind of level out the site. This concept provides the best access for equipment to get to the site from a well maintenance and chemical delivery standpoint, and also provides the village an opportunity to potentially adjust or accommodate expansion of that well. If there were ever treatment needed from that location due to changing regulations down the road or changing water quality. Downsides with this for people that participate or are concerned about impact to the park is this does have the largest impact to park space. It is a large paved area with a large building. We do now show just some general areas, but I anticipate landscaping will be pursued in an attempt to minimize visible impacts of the building as much as possible. So that's the first concept that's being considered. The second concept is very similar, but proposes the goal of minimizing the impact by reducing the size of pavement slightly, but more so reducing the size of the building, though not a significant reduction in size of the building after we eliminated the garage space. That building was tightened up quite a bit. Still provides adequate access for any equipment that may need to be needed to service the pumps or the wellhouse arrangement. Concept three was based upon comments received by residents and attempts to both minimize the size of the wellhouse and tuck it back along the wood line. This line right here is the edge of the woods. So this would tuck back alongside of it. It would minimize the amount of pavement. It does make access to the well a little bit more challenging for any maintenance purposes. It also exposes the generator more. It limits the ability to kind of tuck that behind a well and behind or inside of the retaining wall area. So that will be out in the open more, but again, that is not anticipated to be a regularly operating thing with it typical operation being once a week during business hours and then only during power outages and emergency situations. And that's the case for all alternatives. So that's concept three. And then concept four addresses some of the public comment of bringing the wellhouse near the road. So this would be locating the well approximately 20 feet off the property line near the right away. There would be a driveway added to locate the well at that spot. And then generator and electrical equipment located behind, again, an attempt to reduce impact to both adjacent neighbors as well as the park space. We show just an area where landscaping could be installed. And then, right now, what that revised playground perimeter basically just shows an additional space equivalent to the current. We don't have any specific layouts on what that playground might look like, but the playground would have to be relocated in some way, shape, or form to accommodate constructing the well nearer to the road. Advantages of this from an operation standpoint, it is a very accessible building and would minimize any traffic that may happen through the park in terms of accessing the wellhouse, which would be minimal. Disadvantages are it certainly minimizes any potential flexibilities in the future. We can, we would never be able to expand this should treatment be needed. It also exposes the building quite a bit more, both to neighbors as well as just visibility from the road and then potentially create some blind spots for the back portions of the park. So those are the three concepts that have been discussed at the board level, as Bill indicated. And I can page back through these if people have comments or questions or want to see more after I'm done talking. But as Bill mentioned, we're looking towards attempting to narrow down these options and word for file design relatively. The board's hope is that the they will take some public comment tonight and then we're going to be talking about it and potentially making some decisions at their meeting next week, Monday. And it will certainly be discussed at that point. From that point on, then, just to give everybody a rundown on schedule, the schedule is anticipated to look where we're submitting plans and specs to the DNR for a loan application in June and for approval of the well. The well construction itself will be bid late summer to early fall for construction in the fall, and that well construction will look a lot like the test well construction in terms of equipment and access to the site. It'll actually be the exact same well rig, presuming it's the same contractor, that same well rig that you guys saw out there this past fall. And then after that is completed, the wellhouse will be bid in probably January or February of 2022 to begin construction once thaw happens in the spring of 2022. And that kind of summarizes where we're at in the considerations. Bill, I will turn it back over to you if you want to run any comment.
Yeah, thank you, Ben, for that. I did receive a couple of emails here. I know Casey had asked to speak on some of the layouts and we'll get to that in a bit here, Casey. We did have also a question come in from Deb Cutler. I see that she's on with us. And she had a question in regards to hardness of water and how this well impacts the rest of the water system and the hardness in the water itself.
Sure. So the test well, just into the science, a little bit more of what we did, we looked at two depth of the test well. The 300-foot depth would be very akin to the two wells that the village currently employs and draw from the same aquifer. And the testing that was done on that indicated that we'd expect a very similar hardness to the water use you have today. You guys do have what would be considered hard water, though I would classify it as moderately hard. And I would truthfully, across the board, the water quality coming from the first testing of the test well, which is what is planned for the final, is very similar. So I wouldn't anticipate really any changes in water quality for anyone in the village from this well number three. The deeper test well, which we drilled to approximately 800 feet, did exhibit some different characteristics than the other water that's in the village, which is part of the reason that it was decided not to drill that to a deeper depth. Though we will be maintaining the ability to potentially deepen this well in the future, should there ever be a need due to water quality changes in this lower aquifer here.
Okay, Casey, go ahead.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Ben. Thanks all of you for putting together a few options and sharing them with us. I appreciate it. I think when we originally, when we originally met in the park this summer, I was in favor of and advocating for these options actually back towards the, towards the rear of the park. And I think Jen and my, Jen's over my shoulder, just up there. Jen and I were thinking, you know, boy, if we could get it pushed back, like back, back, back into the woods even, that would be great. Could we even get it, you know, hidden to a degree? It looks like that's not practical and, and given the slope back there, we get it. We understand why. I think in light of that, our, our personal preference has shifted more to the front of the park. Yeah, we prefer that option versus the back. A couple of reasons we, I don't, I don't know what any of this will. Well, one reason is green space and we really, we value our green space back there. We've come to enjoy, you know, seeing our neighbors as they, and their kids, as they play in the park back there. And so keeping some of that green space back there is, would be attractive for us from a neighborhood perspective, meaning as we, you know, get to enjoy our neighbors. Thanks for minimizing the size of it. That, that is really appreciated. I think if it were up front, I mean, I don't know what the curb appeal would be. I know, I don't remember whether your early drawings had any building materials included, but I'd be curious to hear, I know it's not the purpose of the meeting, but a little bit about the building materials and how that would, would or would not blend into a neighborhood with respectable, you know, home values. I'd hope that it would, you know, blend somewhat versus, versus, you know, stick out adversarially. But in a nutshell, our preference at this point would be for it to be up front in the park. I think that I don't think that it eliminates or even to much of a degree would minimize visual or safety, you know, the ability for kids in the park to be seen. There's a, there's still quite a bit of open space there, I think, from the front. And all of us as neighbors as well, they'd be, they'd be a lot more danger, you know, a lot more danger if they just went up one of our community easements into the woods 10 steps. Let's put it that way from a safety perspective. So just a few thoughts. Thanks for letting, thanks for letting us share.
So Casey, I want to take an opportunity just to answer some of the questions that you had in regard, regards to curb appeal. And obviously, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet in picking materials, and I think that's going to come down the line here, but this project would be categorized as a small-scale public service and utilities building under our zoning code, which has minimum standards as a conditional use permit. And one of the items is the exterior, just that the exterior of all the building shall be compatible with the exterior of surrounding buildings. So that's, that's going to have to be considered as part of this process.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Real quick, sorry, while I have you, I don't remember what you guys are talking about in terms of building height. I'm sure you shared that.
Typically, a building like this would have like a 10-foot eve.
Okay.
Not crazy tall. I mean, I put it equivalent to like a ranch, a ranch house style.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. Oh, sorry, Jen's asking about sound.
Yeah, one more question because the drilling this, this earlier this fall was quite loud. Um, and it ran overnight and we lost a few nights sleep because it is, it just runs. What is the generator and what, like, what are the pump house? Like, what are the sound parameters that we have to deal with being, I mean, that's right up against our house. Our bedroom is right there.
From a, from a noise standpoint, the actual wellhouse itself shouldn't generate a whole lot of noise. I mean, the truthfully, the loudest thing that you'd probably hear is there'll be an air conditioner associated with it and the condensing unit will be outside and, you know, it'd be of similar value to what you have for your home. The generator, it'll be a very, very similar to the one that was on site that was a sound attenuated generator that was on site for the well drilling. However, it won't, unless there's a power outage, it will not be running continuously. Truthfully, even during a power outage, the well pump does not run continuously. So you know, it will run at times when the, when the well needs to operate. If you have an extended duration outage, otherwise it'll be once a week. You know, for a half hour during the day.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any more, any other questions from other participants? And feel free to raise your hand on the participant list here, or feel free to unmute yourself and, and announce yourself and, and ask a question. All right, we have Jeff Mahoney. Go ahead, Jeff.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I don't know if you can see me. I'm actually at the park right now. It's finally over about 12 degrees, so we can hike. As, as Casey was indicating, you know, there's a lot of pros to the idea of moving this up front from a maintenance perspective. Quite a bit of less concrete has to be poured, which certainly could translate into money that could be repurposed to help move the park equipment if necessary, which it likely would be. You wouldn't have to have plows going through the winter up through the park while kids are playing at the park. And, you know, it's a neighborhood park and this is the only flat, flattish area that we have for kids to play wiffle ball, T-ball. The Parks and Recreation Department has used this for the archery program. And, you know, I, I built the first house in this subdivision. I know that this was in my covenants after I reread them, but it was never on the plat map. And I get it, we need another water source. I really appreciate the fact that the village has really downgraded this to what we actually need, which is a well. I would like to say that whether this is at the front of this, next to the road, or further back, it would be less of a blight for the, the neighborhood if it's up front near the sidewalk. If you put it in the back, that's what everybody gets to see when they come to look at this glacial valley, which is a wellhouse. Or if it's up front, people can come to the park, walk 20 yards past the building and see the valley, which also has a trail that goes up onto the hill, up to the mountain biking trails that have been established. So I, I really encourage and hope that the village continues to explore the idea of placing this wellhouse close to the road. I think there are plenty of designs throughout communities. I happen to be lucky enough to have worked in Spring Green, McFarland. Your engineering firm has countless experiences of placing these in lots of different areas that can make things look attractive and minimize the impact on public use. So I appreciate people listening and thank you for letting me get outside tonight when it's above 12.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else on the call?
Bill, Casey again, sorry, I'm not anyone else, so I'll keep it really, really brief. Do you, what's the, can you tell us what the distances between the, you know, if we have it up, if you chose to put the building, locate the building up front, what the distances between the building and our, our lot line, our fence there?
Yeah, that's 20 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 20 feet to the parcel line, which I believe also corresponds to your fence, Casey.
All right, okay. Yep. And are there, are there is it detrimental in some ways to consider sliding that building slightly to the north? Closer to the center of the park lot?
No, I, I guess I would propose the, the refinement of this is going to have to involve Mike Axon and just getting a better idea of how he wants the park to lay out, because this will have, right now, we showed it as tight to your property line as possible to minimize impact to the playground. But as you can see, I mean, there's a pretty big impact to the playground no matter what. So there, there would be some flexibility in the precise location of that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we have a hand up from Mike Axon.
Oh, yeah. First, thanks for, for all the information here. This being the first look I've had at this, the discussion of it being closer or even taking out part of this playground is the first I've heard of this other than earlier today. So it's going to take me a little bit to think about where all these other pieces of this project will go. I hate the idea of moving a playground, especially this side of the playground, as that's the most substantial piece that we have in the park currently. So I think the price tag on, on moving that and changing that around, let alone all the pieces then coming back together may be more of a fit than, or maybe more of a problem than, than a solution. Ben, just, just out of curiosity, has there been any thought about moving it back behind the playground where there's already some permeable surface there? Like, yeah, where there's kind of the half circle behind the, the current timbers that are there?
Mike, we hadn't, we haven't really looked at that. Truthfully, no. The, the comments that had been received, you know, kind of focused on keeping it in the back or moving it as far forward as possible. So I mean, again, anything's possible and, you know, it's only dollars, but no, we haven't explored putting it here at this point.
And Mike, I have a question for you in regards to the playground. Is the, is the issue here potentially with taking down a playground and putting it back up or I guess I'm trying to understand it. And I know, I know that this, this will have to go to the Park and Right Committee for a review also.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's the start of, of questioning on that, something that I haven't done. We haven't done within this property or any property. I guess the others, the other issue I have with that is where are we going to place that playground? What, what kind of changes are going to have to, you know, be made? What, what kind of changes are going to have to, you know, be made then to the back of the park? Especially with the slopes and everything that's, that's there now. You know, how do we retrofit the playground that's already in place and, and still meet all of our needs? I think no matter what, you know, you're talking about the green space that's back there. You know, no matter what, we're going to lose green space back there, whether it be with playground, rearranging things around there or, you know, the well itself. As far as us running any other programming there, with the village board making the decision to not have any storage, we will be moving our archery program as it's just not efficient enough for us. So there's plenty of green space that'll be behind the Fitz Randolphs homes, the kind of L shape back there for flat recreational opportunities that, that people are talking about. I don't, I don't know. I guess I, I, it kind of caught me off guard, I guess, with the idea of moving the playground itself, so.
I have a question for Ben. Is there a reason why we're not putting the wellhouse in the driveway that was built for a future well? I mean, we have a driveway right there. That's already concrete, right?
This guy?
Yeah. I guess.
Again, the world is your oyster. That one I, I avoided because predominantly it, it was, it's set up as also the sidewalk for the whole playground. So that does, I guess, as, as I was looking at it and locating it here also probably presents more of a visual obstruction to the actual playground spaces, but again, if, if we're going to start relocating things, I mean, we can, we can talk through any of that.
Yeah, I was just curious on, you know, we have a lot of cement right there.
I will see Jay, having the cement there, unless we're locating it in the back, doesn't do a whole lot. Cause we're going to tear it all up to put a wellhouse in anyway. I mean, when you look at the large well rig, that's going to have to be positioned, the, you know, cutting everything out to do construction, we'd be recasting most of the concrete that you would be benefited if you located a well right here. So from a cost effectiveness standpoint, it doesn't, doesn't gain you anything.
All right.
Other questions, comments? Okay, well, what we'll do here is Ben and I will, we'll put a summary here back together and, and bring that to the village board for some consideration. And I'm sure, you know, we're going to have more conversation in regards to the playground and relocation of the playground and how that impacts the overall park. So I imagine that there's more information that'd be thought out here. Ben or Jay or any of the trustees want to add anything else at this point? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. If you do come up with questions that you haven't had, haven't thought of yet, feel free to email me. I think everyone on here has my email. Otherwise that is also on the website. And then we'll prepare for the village board meeting next Monday. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Ben.